I hereby call the board of the Jersey County Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, I think we're having a forum, I think Mr. Lakens is the only one who's absent at this time.
He's here, he's walking in my face.
Okay. Need to make adjustments. Okay, so now we have four members here. Uh, I would ask the members that have an opportunity to review the minutes passed by you, any changes or corrections, please note otherwise. Uh, motion and second. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, aye? Aye. Any opposed? Alright, do we have any citizens input tonight, uh, before, for the board of zoning appeals? Okay. Being none, we'll move on to the first item, which is a variance request of five feet on the side property line, were in addition to be constructed at sixteen thirty-one on De Rosa Drive by Garrett and Susan Cardwell.
The Cardwells couldn't, they're out of town, couldn't do here, so I told my representative, is that not working?
Something happened, went off. I'm gonna make it all the way out. So there, alright, so your representative-
They're out of town, I don't want to represent them. Uh, we had given these folks a variance to build in front of a house that has existing garage, as y'all would see on the paper. They're gonna add an addition to the house and the garage. And they, uh, instead, you know, it's supposed to be ten feet offside lot line when you have a residence, and when they did the garage, you're gonna have to be five, so now they need a five-foot variance to add this addition between the garage and house. And we've had several variances out on the names trail, about half the houses up there are right on the road from sixties and seventies.
They're simply connecting the garage-
Connecting the garage to the house.
Okay.
And then that's the side set back five.
Technically, that would be if one principal building, and setbacks for the principal buildings are ten feet versus five for accessory buildings.
Actually, this may not even become an accessory building then, if they tie that in.
No, it'd be-
It'll be attached to the house, it's just part of the house.
That's why it needs to be-
So that, so that variance is, is, is a moot point for that one there, but they do need one here to tie that in.
They're, they're both existing, both buildings.
They're both existing, yes.
So you looked at a lot of the topography and such that-
I don't have, yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Any questions today regarding this? Everybody understand what's going on? Okay. Entertained? I'm in motion, is that- Yeah, I got a proper motion to grant the variance of, what, five feet, uh, right there on the corner, uh, and a second. Proper motion, second. Any other discussions, questions? Being none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That being the only item, I need a motion for adjournment. Proper motion and second, sue. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Okay. I hereby call the board of the Jersey County Regional Planning Commission. Uh, looks, we have a forum, I think all members present have sent the permission or low.
We haven't worked on that.
Okay. Alright. Uh, I would ask the members that have had an opportunity to review the minutes, so that's passed by you, and any changes or corrections, please note, without um, before approval. A proper motion, second and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do I have any citizens input tonight for, uh, regional planning commission? I think I have one. Marion?
Yes.
Okay. If you'd like to come forward, I think that's the only one I've got, so. You can keep the comments around three minutes, please.
Yes, I have time for myself, so hopefully, I will.
And if you give your name and address, well, we had it right, I'm sorry, it's right here.
That's right, alright, I can do it again. Okay. Okay, so I was free to consider. Alright. My name's Marion Knight, I live in Fort Forty West Main Street and Dandridge. And, um, first I want to thank you for letting me speak, and I am thankful for, that you're willing to review the zoning resolutions before the long-term plan is developed. I hope your final recommendations will be in sync with the long-range plans, so you won't be wasting your time, that's, I don't want you to waste your time. Second, thank you for protecting this county from crypto mining facilities. Hopefully, your strict site guidelines will prevent the building of one here. Third, and the reason I'm here, is that we again find ourselves in need of rescue by you. The TDA is forcing battery energy storage systems to come here. While I don't live near the proposed site, I certainly wouldn't be happy if one were constructed next to my home. My first choice would be that we not allow guests into this county at all, or this state. But since that's not an option, I hope, I hope you will maximize protections for this county by setting up strict supplementary provisions in the planning resolutions. I spent the last four months looking online for information and advice. There's plenty of information about the horrors of mining for lithium, but that does not help us. There's quite a bit of information about fires and explosions and toxic clouds associated with these battery facilities, but there's almost nothing about the long-term health effects on individuals who are exposed to the toxic batteries, either due to fire or explosion, or in runoff that may contaminate our water or soil. This is because the technology is too new. We will be the case study for long-term use of this form of energy production. Therefore, I'm giving you items to consider, based on National Fire Protection Association, um, product, uh, number eight fifty-five, underwriter lab reports, FEMA reports, an Australian study, and news articles. I would also ask you to consider adding some of the provisions that apply to sanitary landfills due to the toxic nature of lithium ion batteries. And I would ask that you require a permit from the Tennessee Department of Conservation, Environment and Conservation. In addition, I would like to see a requirement for an onsite fire station with hazmat trained firefighters, so our own fire departments will be safe from exposure to emergencies at this facility. I split the list of considerations into three groups: site management, emergency management, and liability. Except for this fire station, site manag-, uh, arrangement, rather, and emergency management suggestions come primarily from the National Fire Protection Association and underwriter lab reports. The liability item suggestions are of my own making. We need these so the county is protected from bankruptcy due to lawsuits by injured parties, or an inability to dispose of the batteries when they're, when they no longer function, or are replaced by new technology. I would be happy to provide any of you with my notes and articles if you need them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Section?
Please, thank you. Okay. Uh, being no others, we're, we're going to our new business, and the first is a site plan review for a warehousing business to be located on Winter Road and Highway eleven E, New Market, by Michael Boyd. Is this Boyd?
Come on in, please.
Do you want any acres? Yeah, right here it is, I'm sorry, it's right here.
We cut off, um, how much were you asking?
Two.
Two acreage.
Two point two.
Cut off of the track.
Yeah, it was twenty-two total, and we cut off two point two.
And it's only, it's I one, except for the two acres that we mapped out when we rezoned it. Three facts.
So these, these are regular automobile parking places, am I correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What about semi-tracker trailer, where you can have any of that?
I'll have delivery trucks, but we'll have room, actually, there's going to be some cars parked in that parking lot. Um, we'll probably have no trucks where the lines is at, and often the front.
Right here.
We'll concrete around two sides of the building where we done no tractor trailers.
So the west side?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, right. I think I've got it where it's concrete in there.
So, so are you saying there won't be like tractor trailer rigs, there'll be more of delivery type trucks?
Right, it's all delivery trucks.
Okay.
You know FedEx, tractor, cracker, like FedEx, UPS. It's more of a warehouse. We, uh, I'll tell you what I do if you want me to do.
That'd be fine, please.
We, uh, we tear down factories down around Georgia for warehouser, and we scrap all the equipment, but all the spare parts that's through the building, they got warehouses where they put new parts, for spare parts. We purchase them, and that's where we store that, and they're selling online. But we don't have like public traffic, we do everything online, so it's all FedEx, UPS. That's the reason I don't, not really want the entrance off of eleven E. That's the reason I'm coming off Winter Road, but I really don't need a public.
Okay, so there won't be an ingress egress on-
No.
Highway eleven E?
No.
Okay, I didn't see one.
Uh, I'm gonna come off Winter, because I really don't need the traffic from the public, it's just a warehouse.
Okay. Tom, have you, have you looked at the proposed septic system for this?
Yeah, he got the system in mind for his house today.
We've got the solar lamp, everything done.
Yeah.
It does, it looks like it's, actually, it looks like it's kind of torqued around the colonies together.
Are you thinking of what?
I've been checking on, yeah.
There's a well there, but I'm still not able to see it.
I mean, have you all kept, we kept it off, or what do you do?
It's got a concrete slab.
I remember. There's a well.
Yeah, there's a little small, it's a, no, just look at that.
Bet it won't come over, it's a well, I'm starting to order it.
Order kept.
Yeah. Water, water kept. One time it pumped over, the flood, pushed my house, I think.
Oh, no, this was-
Yeah, the old house on the north side of the highway. I think it's a lot of water frished sometime, four six, four, went down through the utility door.
The drainage, it looks like you're going to be maintaining on your property, from the way the contour lines.
Yeah.
You agree with that?
Well, I mean, you say the water's gonna come back off to where it's at now.
It looks like it's coming back towards the lower right corner, and some of it going up to the upper left corner.
Right. Yeah, actually, there's a, I guess it's a covert under the highway out there.
Okay.
Then it goes back to, right there in that low area.
But you're not proposing any changes to-
No.
To the drainage.
No.
Any questions regarding, uh, I think it meets the requirements, uh, for what you're doing here, so. No questions anymore?
So it'll be gravel, not concrete?
Part of it's gonna be concrete, part's gonna be gravel.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll black talk that way through the road as soon as I can, but around the building will be concrete, sooner or later, I will black talk it, pump it off the road.
I heard a question.
Okay.
Uh, he's got a well, an old well down there on place, I bet you're gonna cap it or what they, what they have to do.
Where's that well at?
Right out here. Right there, remember my name?
Okay, so it'd be right there, there's a gate right there, and it's in probably a hundred foot, fifty.
Probably, probably, you don't want your house though?
No, my house is gonna be more up here.
Okay.
Alright. It's way down, well, that field, it's not.
It's, it's over here, if you're looking, it's in the, being the west side, northwest side of the property.
That'd be, I guess the only thing is, if there's, if the well's there, and the water was puddled up, and it just put around water contamination, would be better if you just capped that well off?
Uh, it don't drain that way.
It's got a concrete-
It doesn't drain towards that well.
We're not, I, I, I wouldn't see it as being an issue, and the only thing I would say is, if you had a well, and you had a drainage area, and the water-
It's probably the house ball.
It's probably the house ball.
It's in the house ball.
Yeah, that's, I would just be up to, yeah.
Yeah, it's got a concrete slab around it where they had a pump house on it.
Any other questions? Appreciate you guys.
We, we, uh, we, okay. Well, I, my three minutes was up, I, oh, no, no.
I got a proper motion and second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
You want to fix copies? You want whatever.
I'll get it. I will let the next item, we'll give the site plan review for Timberstone RV Resort to be constructed at twenty twelve West Highway twenty-five seventy, New Market, by Denton Valley Properties LLC. Chad. So Chad, I'll let you explain what your, your plan is.
Oh, I just want to get site plan approval on another RV resort. As y'all know, I don't make or dam, and you know what kind of stuff, which I do when I do developments, and this one will be no different. I think we've got everything that meets all the requirements, it was on you, but I'd be more than happy to field questions on anything you got.
He's gonna pump it back up. Yeah, he'll pump, he'll pump from his septic pump stationed down here, back up there under the, the power lines for his leash lines up there.
It'll all be gravity fed down to this point, and then it'll be forced line up to-
That's correct, yeah.
And each side will be served by water, you know, you show the fire hydrants?
Yeah, I bet you down there, we would have a problem.
City water center, full hookups at each side, but there aren't no tent sites there, no frame of tent.
We do have a fifty-foot set, which is the problem.
Right, he's got the, he's got the guest parking, he's got the office and bathhouse. Are you planning on having a full-time person on-site management?
And then, uh, he knows here at the church, he is building a privacy fence over here.
That's correct.
I'll look for that, and then the rest of the property around it already has, has trees and vegetation, did that around, so.
And this is, yeah, this is, um, proposed for the center of this property, and there's a lot of, you've got terrain.
That's exactly, a bit of the terrain and the topo, and it's, it's wooded, the whole perimeter's pretty much wooded, so it's, I mean, it's a pretty private location, other than that where the joint's a cemetery, and we're gonna put a privacy fence between that. And we have a right away that goes up through there to the cemetery from the church, we're gonna talk to the committee there about putting a gate, so if we've got RVers that wanna attend worship service on Sunday morning, then they don't have to get down on the main road, they can drive a golf cart over there.
Tom, are you okay with this proposal?
Yeah, we, we look down, we look around, we look at the slats.
Okay.
The slats, like, we, but they're really not there.
Mr. Dixon, so I just want to confirm that with you, make sure you're on board with it. Okay, Tom. You're aware that you need to pave the first three hundred feet and that sort of thing, and, uh, cautiously obligated to the improvements that are in, uh, in the zoning resolution. Chairman, I believe the site plan meets our requirements.
Any questions for David? Any questions for Chad?
How tall is the privacy fence have to be?
Well, the, the codes typically states that if you go over seven feet, it has to be an engineer, engineer, okay, for the building codes, and so, you know, it just really just depends on the circumstances, uh, you know. Typically, you're, if you, yeah, seven feet, unless you got a seven footer, he's not gonna be able to look over the fence or, uh, from that standpoint, so. There again, they, they just variant signs, they really just, there's no, there's no set standard that we have for the height of that one.
We had it in the rig.
So it could be fourteen, huh? Well, if that provided the privacy, it could be, uh, you know, uh, when you think about this, let's say you have a hill here, and then you put a fence on top of it, it's four feet, then the hill itself, I mean, that four-foot fence may give you twelve-foot of privacy from, uh, from, as far as they go, so. You know, fence serves two purposes, it serves people from ingress and egress, from trespassing as far as it goes, and then also can provide the privacy as well, it just depends on how the fence is built.
Also note that the ingress egress is right in the middle of the property, on a straight stretch of road.
Good business building, good place.
Both, in both directions.
Yeah. And I think he, on the fence, he, I think he, he coordinated this with the church, and told him that he was gonna do that. So I think they were happy.
That's more of a courtesy than anything, isn't it?
Yes.
And when we get done grading, our property will be slowed down from that, so we're gonna have a six-foot fence, and then our property will slow off by another five feet, so support levels off, so basically it's eleven foot on our side trying to look over, you know, and it ain't gonna be a disstop if it was up downhill from- Right, exactly, but the way it lays, the cemetery's on the upper side, you know.
Alright.
Chairman, I recommend for approval, if I understand, uh, Mr. Dixon needs to follow through with, um, required approvals.
Any questions? Yeah, proper motion and a second. Any other discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Thanks, sir.
You want to do a copy?
We'll move on to the next item, review of Lake Haven Camp Resort, the access road.
You seem to got a letter in your, I think, about, what Josh, I'm gonna tell you about, yeah?
So I'd like to thank the planning commission for the continued support of our project over the last several years. We are, I'm pretty proud of what we've been able to accomplish together, and very excited to welcome owners and renters on-site here later this spring. Um, we have been talking with Mr. Seals and Mr. Tipton for some time about the possibility of bringing a new access road into the resort, um, off of Fame Road in Sevier County. And, um, as we've talked through that, they recommended that we went ahead and went through all of the authorities at Sevier County, and with the state, to get approval for that. So we have that, um, we have our land use approval, we have our notice of coverage with our SWIP plans, with TDEC, and we have our, um, land disturbance permit from Sevier County. So, the road is engineered, Terry has done all our engineering since I've been involved, and, um, and so that has all been through their process and approved. Um, and the reason we're doing it is, it's a much better access road, and a much safer access road. It's gonna be a better owner and renter experience, it's gonna be better for, um, emergency vehicles coming in and out of the resort. And, uh, really, the reason that I'm here is, I'm asking the planning commission to consider, right now, we are bonded to improve Brightstone Way after we complete construction. And so, that would be widening it and paving it, and, um, if you go back to the original resolution attached to the zoning, um, that is something that, uh, was a part of that resolution back in two thousand and six, probably-
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three.
If you remember, and I don't know if any of yous do, but in two thousand and three, the planning commission turned down R two up there. Uh, well, it wasn't Josh's people, I forget now who it was, but they kind of the Philadelphia lawyers, as I call them, and the county commission overturned it and rezoned it. They were gonna buy damage, a ladder truck, and all this stuff, 'cause we're building condos out there, well, economy tank, never hurt them again. So, in that, part of that rezoning, in, yeah, two thousand and three, six? That's a, no, it maybe was two thousand and six. But, um, part of what they wrote in there, yeah, I can't read, um, was they had to pay all the way, you know, Sevier Camp was gonna do Fame Road, and they had to pay Brightstone Way all the way back into the thing, well, anybody here ever, 'cause I know Terry and me and David have, but have you, have you been on that road, Brian? No, goodness. Uh, it's a whole lot better access, me and David went over there today, if they could go through Sevier Camp, to the top of the, or the development area, a whole lot better. Now, what they're gonna need from you all, is something to send the county commission from, according to our lawyers, we, they'll have to release-
I think, I think it's gonna be the other way around.
Well, they need that.
I think it has to go to the county commission.
But I would think we need a recommendation from this body.
We could make a recommendation, we could make a recommendation to them, and it would be based upon whatever their term change was. What, what I was trying to do was, is that, I was thinking was, is that I didn't want them to do it, and then them send it back to us to go through. My thing was, I thought- We are, I'm pretty proud of what we've been able to accomplish together and very excited to welcome owners and renters onsite here later this spring. Um, we have been talking with Mr. Seals and Mr. Tipton for some time about the possibility of bringing a new access road into the resort, um, off of Fame Road in Sevier County. And, um, as we've talked through that, they recommended that we went ahead and went through all of the authorities at Sevier County and with the state to get approval for that, so we have that, um, we have our land use approval, we have our notice of coverage with our SWIP plans with TDEC, and we have our land disturbance permit from Sevier County. So the road is engineered, Terry has done all our engineering since I've been involved, and, um, and so that has all been through their process and approved. Um, and the reason we're doing it is it's a much better access road and a much safer access road. It's gonna be a better owner and renter experience, it's gonna be better for emergency vehicles coming in and out of the resort. And really, the reason that I'm here is I'm asking the planning commission to consider, right now, we are bonded to improve Brightstone Way after we complete construction, and so that would be widening it and paving it. And, um, if you go back to the original resolution attached to the zoning, um, that is something that was a part of that resolution back in two thousand and six, probably.
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three.
If you remember, and I don't know if any of yous do, but in two thousand and three, the planning commission turned down R two up there. Uh, well, it wasn't Josh's people, I forget now who it was, but they kind of the Philadelphia lawyers, as I call them, and county commission overturned it and rezoned it. They were gonna buy damage a ladder truck and all this stuff because of building condos out there while economy tank never hurt them again. So in that, part of that rezoning, in, yeah, two thousand and three, six, that's a, no, it maybe was two thousand and six. But, um, part of what they wrote in there, yeah, I can read, um, was they had to pay all the way, you know, Sevier County was gonna do Fame Road, and they had to pay Brightstone Way all the way back into the Fame, well, anybody here ever, because I know Terry and me and David have, but have you, have you been on that road running? No, goodness, uh, it's a whole lot better access, me and David went over there today, if they could go through Sevier County to the top of the, or the development area. Whole lot better, now what they're gonna need for you all is something to send to county commission. From, according to our lawyers, we, they'll have to release county commission.
I think it's gonna be the other way around.
Well, they need that.
I think it has to go to the county commission.
But I would think we need a recommendation from this body.
We could make a recommendation, we could make a recommendation to them and it would be based upon whatever their term of end was. What, what I was trying to do was, is that, I was thinking was, is I didn't want them to do it and then them send it back to us to go through. My thing was, I thought if we made a recommendation tonight based upon this, whatever, to county commission, and it's still their, their call as far as it goes, based on the information that they're providing us tonight, that's all.
Now, he's also, today, John, while we were riding around with him today, he, he has no problem with maintaining Brightstone Way back into the development. He's already made it three times better with that pressure run, is he crushing it?
He put crushed concrete down?
Yeah, it's, it's really better than I've ever seen in twenty years, and so, uh, that, he's, he's gonna keep that up as long as it develops, which is a plus, I would think, four or five houses, it's back in there. But, again, it's totally up to county commission, but I would, like me and Terry said, we think we should have a recommendation to the county. That, I mean, none of them on there those six-ounce gears, so they're not gonna remember it either.
Well, the other thing too was, is, is, is that there's a bond in place to do, to do this work. And so basically, whatever, I'm, I'm sure that when county commission comes in, they're gonna do it, but in our recommendation, it should be that that bond should be left in place until this new road is constructed. All I'm doing is, is I'm protecting the people that have already purchased property in there, that they, they know that they don't have a viable means of egress, egress in there, and that there's money in place to take care of that, that's where that goes. Now, you know, what county commission does and what they say, that's, we have no control of, but that, I, I just feel like that i- i- if they choose to do so, and if we were to make that as part of our recommendation, I think that would be very pertinent. Matter of fact, I, I would not make a recommendation, I could not vote for it otherwise, so.
And he, he explained, and I'm sure Josh will tell you, he don't wanna be booked, not on one.
Well, he also has a letter in here, basically from.
Charles.
Charles, saying that he's good at this, and I think he's happy with it now.
I think he is.
He prefers it.
He prefers it, because if we, uh, if we do that, we have to take it over in three years, and they've done that by the end of it.
And you've been before the Sevier County Planning Commission with this proposal?
So, Mr. Temple, we have a preliminary plat with him, but they won't, they won't give us a final for this until the road is completed.
Understand, and that's the way it should be?
Yes.
Unless they agree to take a bond or something. But it hasn't been given a preliminary approval?
Yes.
Go ahead.
It's approved. They won't let us plat it until we as-built it, and, so I mean, they can approve the road.
Yeah, they approve.
Stormwater's approved the road, we got a SWIP on it, and, but the way Sevier County does, we can't plat that out until it's built. So if it is approved, we just gotta build the road, and it's gotta be to their standards, and we have to as-built it, and, and geotechnical and all that, and then.
But, um, this will be a private road or a public road?
It's a private road, we're doing it two county specs.
Two county standards, okay. They probably require that anyway for private roads.
Yes.
So, anyway, that's, that's good to know. So it's, it's not in our jurisdiction.
Questions? Concerns? Everybody understand, everybody say.
Well, I, when you're talking about use, or keeping up that other road, is it gonna be an alternate access, or what is it gonna be? And, I mean, I know if you've got a better road, they'll probably use it, but what about the other road?
So if I'm maintaining Brightstone, I would prefer to keep my construction traffic on that Brightstone route and have the renter traffic coming through that new entrance, that'd be my preference.
Well, I'd like to see. We've got the plans right here, if anybody would like to see.
Is that always Sevier County?
It is, I mean, it's, we'd be approving these plans, but they're here, it's your road.
So a plan of mine tight in Brightstone, after you've really deployed it for construction access.
So, yes, we would, as long as we were using that for construction, we would continue to maintain it like we have.
So in which case then, if they continue to use it and, and as far as it goes, then it would still be in better shape than it was before they started?
Way better. I, I invest quite a bit in that road every hour, I can tell you.
Well, I'd say this, since we, we can't, we have no authority to take action to relieve them of what they rely, but we can, I feel like it would be pertinent for us to make a recommendation one way or the other, from this board to county commission when, at the April meeting, when they come before then.
And I told Josh, if, if for some reason we had a special call meeting before then, we'd get it on there, I don't know of any, but, you know, quicker.
Well, the other thing was, is that, even if that, I, I, what I hoped was, is that however they make their, you know, time is, is some of the essence as far as it goes, so, you know, wherever the decision goes, he needs to know so that he can take some action. And what I was trying to do was, is that once county commission made the decision, whatever they made, at that point in time, he knows the direction he needs to go, and he doesn't really need to fall back on us a couple of weeks later to come back and forth to ask for the same thing that, that he's asking for right now. That's, that's was my thing, and I'm just trying to help, help him as far as it goes from a time constraint.
So you're wanting the recommendation to include the, include a release from us if the county commission approves of it?
Yes.
So he doesn't have to come back?
That's correct.
But to mine time, would sure go on twice?
If that, yeah, i- i- in other words, to me, the motion, the need-to-be statements is, is that the recommendation would be to county commission, that if you, if, if this is some way you so desire, that to release the obligation of paving and, and bringing Brightstone Way up to county specifications in lieu of the new road that would be built, which is better access to Sevier County, but in so being, the bond would stay in place until the new road is completed and then, uh, released, released, and then he would still be obligated to maintain Brightstone as he used it during construction.
I know Mr. Charlie doesn't have any authority on what you're gonna be doing, but will you all agree to have him check the box?
Absolutely.
When you get the road done, prior to the release of the bond?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and Charlie said he worked well with whoever the guy is in Sevier County, the team, like, they work good together, so he had no problem with that.
I'm not familiar with Sevier County's road standards. Maybe you can tell me, you should know, did they require that, that they be asphalt with a six-inch base, that sort of thing, or you can tell me?
Yes, it's, it's in that plan. Yeah, yeah, he had six-inch, six to one and a half.
Okay, a two-inch binder?
Like Jonas Smeltzer's.
Similar does.
Yeah, or Jonas Smeltzer, I think, is the highway of Sevier County, Sevier County.
I was pretty sure that Sevier County progressed to that, but you have a works to ask, right?
Well, uh, one question, I, when county commission does this, a year or two, whatever it is that Josh wants to come back to release that bond, they don't have to go back to county commission?
No, I think once they make that decision and vote on it.
I'm gonna lay a motion on this. And I want, it needs to be, our recommendation is to release the bond at the completion of the road, after Mr. Charlie checks the box. And that we, this board, give Tim the authority to release that bond, or, and our union, whoever's got the sign.
Well, that was one of the questions I had.
Or is finally a sign, is that the sign?
Would it be the planning commission?
The planning commission, okay, so that was, that was my question, so who, who releases the bond, the planning commission?
The planning commission will have to release the bond.
So once that's done?
I just didn't know who had the sign, I think it was Simon.
So we're gonna take action on that tonight, so they won't have to come back, let's take action on it, correct?
If I make the motion, that's the motion I'd like to make.
Okay.
Is it roll it all up in one, put the recommendation to the county commission that it be released at such time when all those requirements are met. As they vote in the affirmative, then it gives the planning commission the ability to release it, and that authority would be vested for Tim to sign off that we do not have to have them meet.
Okay.
Because it could be in the month or whatever.
Thank you.
And that way, he can just sign off on it, we're done with it, you all done with it, everything. Is that?
So I think that is formed a proper motion, and you got a second, okay? Discussion, everybody understand what, what we're doing here, okay? Uh, this is just our recommendation to the county commission on this issue, and it will be before them, and they, but I think that they probably, they, they've had a letter from the road superintendent, and I think they needed to get my, our opinion as well for them to make that decision, okay?
And if they do the affirmative, then the process is there, once they get everything done, get the bosses checked, to get the thing signed off. So we don't have to meet.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor, aye, in your post, thanks, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, the next discussion of rezoning, Sheriff's County. I appeared before county commission at the work session in the last meeting in regards to seeing if they would be, would consider uh, us looking at the zoning for our county. And the reason I'm saying that is, is that we've had several issues that we've been in here over, as far as it goes, and so we have some people that, that basically feel like Arizona, which was done in nineteen ninety-eight, and so we have, as a body, we've, we've plowed some new ground as far as it goes, but then there again, our county has changed drastically, and our land use basically has changed. And so, uh, you know, county commission gave us a unanimous vote to say, yes, let's proceed with this, because if they hadn't, I wasn't gonna do it. Because then I wouldn't, I didn't want to waste your time, okay? If, if they weren't on board, then I wasn't gonna waste this board's time, we would just continue with what we had and, and proceed forward. But there are things that need to change, I think, and I don't know, and I'm saying that's why we're gonna have this discussion. And, but first and foremost, I, I just wanna, first, I want you to feed back to me if you think that this is something that needs to be done. Because we're the people that's gonna be asked to do it, along with some other people, and, and the people that are gonna be involved in doing this process, but when it's all said and done, it's gonna fall back to us to do the, some of the gritty work in this. And if you don't feel comfortable, or if you've got reservations that we're capable of doing, or this, that, where, I speak up now, now, I just wonder what you have to say, what's your take?
I, I'm gonna wanna agree with you, Mr. Terry, and I, I made the motion to do it at the county commission, and, and as I said, there, you know, there's some things that we need to look at. A lot of people have said, oh, I need this protection, that protection, but if, if we do this, we, we don't need to do it peacefully. We need to do a comprehensive review and, and change of what we're doing, and this, this could be a watershed moment where it, we give, and there was a lot of talk, Mr. Sue, about several, and they had a vision, and they had this and that for the county, but, but one of the things uh, that we, and Mr. Terry brought this up, about doing overlays, about where the county, where do you want the growth? Where do you want the businesses? I think that's gonna be important. At least for me, I mean, I, I, I think eleven E is gonna be, four-lane road's gonna develop, it's gonna have commercial business, so. And, and as many corridors, and, and so if we put down, and I'm using that as an example, but if we put down, hey, we want, we wanna say right up front, this is our preferred thing, don't, don't mean it always has to happen, but this is where our preferred thing is. You're gonna put in a business, you're gonna put in some commercial industrial, whatever it needs to be on a major highway, major road. Or you got the infrastructure in place, we don't want it on Repace Road or Big Bend Road, or, we, we don't need a factory there. We need it out on the four-lane, we need it on ninety-two, we need it on sixty-six, we need it, we need it on four eleven over, those corridors. Those kind of things, saying that, and then saying where we want that growth in the county, I think that's gonna be an important task of what we're doing, and I don't know that there's any greater vision. Mr. David, I don't know if you agree or not, is if you say as a county, this is where we want our business corridors, this is where we want stuff to develop, and then you can go from there, because if you head down Kingston Pike, years ago, I can remember as a kid going down Kingston Pike, and you got out towards Farragut, Hughes Outtake.
Is that when you were running liquor? I'm just kidding.
I can neither confirm nor deny. But we used to also, we'd be in the chat, and that'd been, when you got down, I mean, Dixie, there was nothing at Dixie, like, John, you said.
That's correct.
Some things that you didn't need to go into.
Like that movie, like that outdoor movie theater?
The one you used to go to all the time?
Yeah, I've never been there.
But, but if you look down through there, they got, that thing has got businesses all along there, but now they've got developments, like, they got condos, they've got a lot of stuff coming down there that's developed in behind, but they've got businesses lining that thing all the way down. And as much as it hurts me to say that eleven E will develop like that, I, I can see that happening. May not be in my lifetime, but it, it's gonna hatch that, it'll come right out of Knoxville, come right up through there. But.
Is that the reason that everyone has for eleven, eleven E and?
Well, I don't know, I mean, that's what I, I'm just using it as.
I'm just throwing that out because it's almost a case of be careful what you wish for, if you're not, you know.
Well, I don't know where you put, if you don't put it on major or.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
And if we want to direct some things like that, then, uh, a lot of these subdivisions are saying, oh, but they don't imagine anything going into subdivisions, and, and I'm, they want protections, and, and you can provide some stuff for them if you do that, and then you, but we can't, you know, if you're a hammer, everything, the world looks like a nail. You, we can't do that, we've got to, we gotta take some time on this thing and get it right, and I, I just see it as a, as a good start on this thing because we are different than we were in nineteen ninety-eight, for sure.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with the comprehensive look.
And there may be some, I know there's been some talk, uh, Mr. Terry has said that several people have called him about making a special designation for camp grounds, or, or for this, or that, and, and maybe A, maybe A one's too broad anymore, Mr. Sue. Maybe, maybe we've got some stuff in there we don't need and we can change, but, I mean, that's.
It is, to me, there, there's really two things that have been issued. One is that people that wanna develop for commercial, a lot of times, they struggle because we can't get them, we can't get them approved, okay? And, as far as it goes, the other thing is, is that because we have so much residential development that are here, that's here now, that the tracks that are joining them, basically. here, that's here now, that the tracks that are joining them, basically what they are zoned in is not conditions that makes those people happy. So I know that one of the things that we'll probably look at is, is that there's gonna be a cluster of developments that are gonna be outside growth boundaries that we're gonna take a look at, that are residential probably, and there's probably gonna be some tracks that are around them, that we may come in and say, you know what, either we're gonna take some things out or want that's zoned to protect those people, which is what they're asking for, basically, or we come up with a different residential designation for outside the growth boundary. And the reason I say that is, is that you can have an R1 inside the growth boundary, because if you look, we want to encourage growth to go there, high density, more high density growth to go into the growth boundaries, okay? But there again, if you have an R, just a residential zone outside that's around these properties, that still just allows single-family residential churches and schools, which is what everything else allows, then they feel like they're getting protected to a certain extent. So now, that being said, there's always the density issue, and I know, Chigurh, you brought this up, that was one of your concerns, as far as it goes. My thing is, is that you can have two different densities inside the growth boundary and outside the growth boundary, as far as lot sizes go. So we could establish a different density outside, which means basically, yes, you're still gonna, you may, you may get a few more houses, but you're not gonna get just unending protection houses. But then again, that zoning there protects those residential developments. And I, and I thought about, I thought about that, and I felt good about it, but, you know, the one thing that I always don't wanna do is trample on people's rights that they have under property, to a certain extent, okay? And I know this, I know that people, by property, basically, a lot of times, based upon what they're going to do to make it develop, and it may or may not, I mean, be a development that the people like, but it's what that individual wants to do and it meant to requirements, as far as it goes. So I always feel like that you have those property rights. And the reason I say that is, is that we've had people come here that have residential developments, and they're adjoining a piece of property that allows something that they're not conducive of. So, when did we fail them? Did we fail them in the fact that when those developments come in here and wanna do residential developments, we should've said, no, because you're up against this property right here, and this is what's gonna be in here? But we did. We allowed those developments to occur for residential uses and everything, but I'm just saying, that, that one guy, that, or the person, whoever it may have been, that owned that property, they had rights. They bought their property and they said, this is my intention to do this, and now then, all these other things that come around me, and everybody's against me, and they don't want me to do what I bought my property for. So I don't wanna trample on those, on those rights as well. So whenever we do this and make changes and everything else, there's gonna be some of those people that are gonna become the force. We're gonna make some people happy, but then there's gonna be some people, they're gonna say, hey, you killed me, you just took away everything I wanted to do with a stroke of a pen. And, and they would be right, we may have, we've taken some of their rights away. And, you know, but that's, that was the other thing. So I, I know that, I know that we've looked at trying to designate to help commercial businesses come in, and I think we should, okay? And then the other thing is, is that the people who told us is, is that when I have a residential development, I wanna be sure that whatever comes in beside me is gonna be suitable, as far as it goes. Well, what happens when we just keep going residential, 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 and eventually, you know, we may not have any more of those properties out there that, where you could build a campground on, or a country store, or something of that nature, we might run out of those. But, there again, I, but that's, that's what we've heard, and those are some of the things that I know that y'all heard, and that people have talked to you about. So we, but we gotta take all sides into consideration when we do this, as far as it goes. But, I don't know, you know, I, I think it's, I just feel like it's time. I've been on here a long time, and, and I've never seen more people upset over particular issues than I have now. And, so, but like I say, but if y'all don't wanna, if you're not on board and you don't feel comfortable with us doing it, I prefer you just tell me right now, and we'll reload and try to figure out something else. It's, it's a big task, but I feel confident with the members that we have on here that we're capable of doing it. And one of the other things that, when I say it's us, it's not gonna be just us, okay? It can't be just us on this. So the long, I've been, I made an invitation to the long-range planning committee to, and the mayor encouraged this, that they also come in. So they're basically made up of commissioners, that's where it goes, so basically, they're gonna be able to reach out and get what the public has to say for them. But I'm also gonna use them. And the way I'm gonna use them is, is that I need data, we're gonna need some data. And I, when I, when I say data, I mean, I wanna know data about everything that's gonna affect people that live in this county, okay? That's where it goes. And they're gonna be good at that. They'll, they'll be able to, they'll be able to get that, some of that a whole lot easier than, than we can. But once we get all this together and everything else, hopefully, we can sit down and we can see at, at that point in time. And the other thing is, we can't, the other thing we can't cut out is, is that the public's gonna have some say in this, okay? They will. One way or the other, they'll have some say in what's gonna happen.
They should.
And they should. And they should. But here's what I don't want, okay? I don't want a few to influence something that's gonna be for the overall betterment of your county. And I'm sure when, when the first zoning came around the very first time, I'm sure there was some people out there, some people felt like they weren't happy with it, to a certain extent, okay? But it was new, nobody knew what to expect. Now then, we've had it, everybody wants, wants to know, knows what to, sort of what to expect, as far as it goes.
So, well, I don't wanna see this document come something, or some group, small group or whatever, can beat somebody over the head with, I mean, we've gotta, we've gotta respect the property rights on both sides.
I agree.
And we've got, we've got, when we do this, with all the input, we've gotta figure out, there can't be if, I guess you said, somebody, somebody's gonna be happy, somebody's gonna be mad, if they're not all mad, a little bit, Terry, we didn't get it right.
That's true.
We didn't get it right.
That's actually.
So they don't all walk away mad. We didn't get it right.
I mean, you know, the thing is, when people, when people come here and speak and it's whether, and the arms get heated, I really don't get mad, I just feel like it's people come here expressing their opinions, as far as it goes, you know? And as long as they're considered to other people, I'm willing to listen, or, you know, and I don't like rudeness, I'll just tell you, I don't like people that are rude, and so, but I, I think that's where we're at, and, you know, I don't know if we need some form of motion, or I don't know how we did to agree to do this, but, you know, but I do know this, if you, if you don't feel comfortable with it, I just wish you just, some of you just speak now. If you think it's a too big a task for us to handle, or something you don't wanna be involved in, I'm afraid you just tell me upfront. And, and that's fine, I'd rather you, you know, be honest.
I think you're gonna have to take the time, and you can't do this and hurt.
Well, it won't, we won't, I mean.
Don't put a time in there.
I, and, and I'm not, I'm just, all I'm saying is, is that, you know, we had to start sometime. That's the only thing I'm saying. And to me, it got to the point to where, when you get enough people that are unhappy with what, what they think and what they perceive as what zoning's supposed to be and everything else, because you are right. Some people think that zoning is there to protect, yeah, it protects what you have, but the other guys got rights too. And so you gotta, you gotta weigh both when you, when you do this, so.
And it's to help the county develop in an efficient manner?
Yep.
Set that saves taxpayers money?
Well.
And, for example, the high-density developments shouldn't be way out in the country, they should be clustered more together, but, for example, so, you know, okay?
That's, but they, that was one of my things, okay? We put that in place, and when you look at the land use plan, and the thing was, was to cater bigger developments to go into your growth boundaries. And it was almost as if you're like, wanting to hurt those people into these places here. But what I have found in Jefferson County is, is that people are gonna, gonna live where they wanna live. And if that's in a two-hundred lot development over here on the lake that's out in the rural area, then that's what, that's what they want, as far as it goes. And so, you know, I don't know, I'm not so much, I, I, you know, I look at the density that we have now based on the lot sizes, and I have no issues with those if we go to residential area. And the reason I say that is, is because of this, is that we may determine that says, oh, because we just look at the acreage, and we automatically look at how many lots is gonna be, and we automatically add up how many houses are gonna be, we automatically add up how many cars and how many vehicles and everything else, and it doesn't work that way. It doesn't. There's gonna be some guy coming here, and he's gonna wanna build his house, and he's gonna buy three lots. So boom, our, our two more houses is already gone, because this guy built a big house and he needed extra lots, okay? So, and then there's gonna be some lots that are gonna be bigger in, begin with, because we know our topography. You can't get around it, that sometimes lots just have to be bigger because of that. And the other thing that we just implemented, that we just implemented, that's gonna be, is gonna be a big, big factor on lot sizes anymore, is when we decided that you had to have a building site on every single lot, that meets the requirements, okay? So you may buy a big lakefront tract, as far as it goes, and you may hope to get your money out of it as far as you go, but the thing is, that whatever you sell somebody from that, from that point in time forward, they gotta be able to get a house on it, or you gotta show that they can get a house on. I think that, that's one thing that's gonna make lot sizes, in some cases, gonna make it bigger, just, just from, from that action right there. So, you know, like I say, I, it's, it may seem overwhelming, I don't know, it does, I don't think it will. I think we've tackled some pretty big issues here, and, you know, and it was done. And so it was people from Jefferson County that basically sat down and were setting zoning in place for this right here, and where there's some different people from Jefferson County that are gonna look at it again. And you know, who knows, somewhere down the road, ten, fifteen years from now, depending on how this goes or whatever, there may be another group on this border that says, you know what, we need to go back and look at zoning again. But, but maybe they don't need to wait as long as we wait. Maybe we should've done this maybe ten years ago, and we might not be, have some of the issues that we've had to address here. Does that mean there's gonna be things that come before us then? We don't know what's gonna, yeah, it is, all the time. There's gonna be new things out there, we've seen it, you know, with this battery eating storage system, with crypto mining, with a body farm, all those kinda things are still gonna come in here, we're still gonna have to make those type of decisions. But what I'm trying to get away from is, is that every time somebody wants to do something, that we don't have to have a lockdown right now. That's, that's, well, so, and if you, like I said, if you have feelings, I, I just, I would, I'd like to just lay them out there and tell them. If you see something different, if you're saying, Terry, you're crazy, can't do it, that's okay, tell me that. But, you know, and some of the, here's the thing, some of the ideas that we're probably gonna throw out there, the county commission, they're probably, someone's gonna sweat, sweat bullets, thinking, hell, where am I gonna get this through or whatever. But they, it's like I told them, I said, don't make us go through all this hard work and get there, and then all of a sudden, you can't stand up for it.
You speak to Miss Lotte Finks, it's time. It's time, what's changed, the county's changed.
Yeah, it has, it's changed.
It changes all the time.
Yeah. So anyway, that's, that's what I'm looking at, how's the process gonna work? I'm sure, any questions about that? Well, the only thing I know is, is, and, is that, I say we get, just get our maps, and we just lay them out here in front of us, and we look at the county and we look at what's, where, where the developments are here, this, that, whatever, and say, you know what, point number one, this looks like it needs to be a good corridor up and down through here for some industry or commercial. We may look at another corridor and say, you know what, maybe that would just be good, not necessarily for industrial, but it might be good for commercial. Now, the other thing that you have to say is, is that, and I threw this point out at the county commission meeting once, I, there was two points I gave to them. One was, was that we need to have the rezoning, and they voted for that. The other one I threw out there to them was, was that Dumpham Valley Road needs to be upgraded. They didn't tackle that one, not yet, okay? But here's the thing, everybody knows it, so why not just say it out loud? And that's the way I looked at it when I told them that. And it had nods, and everybody understood that there was a problem there. But maybe sometimes it's just a spark it needs to take to make, to correct that problem. I mean, I don't know. And you know, and it may be that, they say, well, Lake Griffiths County, we did, but all I know is this, until you start finding out, getting the numbers, this, that, whatever, I don't know. And the reason I told them, I feel about Dumpham Valley the way it is, center of our corridor, we probably know what's gonna happen on the west side of Dumpham Valley at the exit down there, okay? And I'm pretty sure on the east side, that there's probably gonna be more industrial, industry come in, and what I don't know is, is if we can get the industry, or it's just gonna be City of Marsh Town coming in and making guitar boards on that, both ways, okay?
They'll eventually run out of ground.
They will, they will. And that's why I'm saying, if we're prepared, then we might get the grain out of it, at least something. And, and, you know, I hate to say scratch, but you know, but, but they're right, John Neal's right, he's exactly right. But if we're not ready for it, then, you know?
The good thing about what we're doing, we tackled this thing, we don't have to land the Williams, we don't have to give away a farm, we, we got enough stuff in this county right now that it pays the bills, and we can be choosy about what we bring in, and we can bring in the right kinda field for what we want. We don't have to give them a tax abatement, just like there's an industrial in Jefferson City, and we completely went away from tax abatements with them, and we paid so much per job. They guaranteed X number of jobs, this was our investment, we divided that out, per job, each job is worth this much, and at the end of the year, they give us a, a list of how many people they employed average during the year, and we write them a check back in the county instead of giving them a tax abatement. Tax abatements are, they don't work because they don't, they don't build long-term relationships. What they do is they, they come in there and they run that thing to the end, then they leave.
John Gier.
John Gier's a prime example of what happened. People within their building right now are not got the same kinda deal, David.
Yeah.
They're paid on per job. They said they're supposed to have three hundred jobs, if they don't show up with a hundred and fifty on that list, or a hundred and fifty-one, that's all they get back. But they write their check, they write their tax check just like everybody else. And they're good citizens, they've done well, and they have been very, very good for Jefferson County. But the fact of the matter is, if we structure this thing right, and we are pro-business and bring them in here, bring the right kinda stuff in, that's what we need to see. We don't have to catch everything going out through here, because some of the stuff's not what we want.
Yeah. One of the other things that's probably gonna happen on this, is that there will possibly be some extra meetings, I'm pretty sure, as part of it, so, you know, I can't, I can't get around that, because you know, we can't have our normal agenda, and I can't keep you here till eleven o'clock every, every time we have a meeting. Here's the thing is, is that eventually, I, I know what happens, you're just ready to go home, at some point in time, you've heard enough, you got tired, and you wanna go home. I understand, that's just, it's just common sense. And, and that's why sometimes I just wanna take things off the agenda, because I just know you've had enough, and that's just human nature. So, but there will be times when we will have, to have some, some work sessions, okay? And which are less formal, as far as it goes, and we can throw some really hot ball stuff off the wall, and not, you know? and not, you know, say, hey, you know what? It's just an idea, and, and toss some things around. But, you know, I don't know, I mean, is this something that, that we need to make a motion out of for this board that you're on? Or you just, you just wanna say, let's go for it? You just tell me how you wanna do it?
Because everybody needs to jump in and have a seat.
Because we, we have to rezone everything in the county, or we need to.
I swear, and that's exactly what John Neal told them at, at the county commission.
Simple as that. All we're gonna do is we're gonna start down through there, in, at least the way I pictured from this day, we're gonna start down through there, and we're gonna take A1. And we're gonna look in there and see if things are what they need to be, and we're gonna take R1, and we're gonna take. Do we need to divide R1 rural and R1 urban? Do we need to have another thing for this particular thing, is it need to go in a different deal? I, I would think that's how we start down through there, and we just take it, we don't have to take all of it one night.
As you say, start with the zoning resolution.
I think we all start with a, with a thing that says, A1 contains this, 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 and this. And if we feel like something is not fitting in there, it's not working, then let's figure out where would be that? Where would be, do we need another agriculture zone for that? Is, or should that?
See if it does what it's designed to do, so to speak.
Exactly. Is it still serving the purpose? When we have citizen like Mr. Chad here comes in, he needs something. Is our zoning law still serving the purpose for what he's doing and the county?
Not just him, but.
But what we're doing here in the county, does it further the benefit of the county? And do what it needs to do? Will we get him in the right place?
Are we protecting the residents as well?
We're protecting his rights, we're protecting the people around him. Do we have the right kind of things in place? He gonna put a campground in and, and Mr. Chad does a good job down there with what he does. But does all the campgrounds look like that? Are they to our standards? Is this where we want things to go? Those are the kind of things I think that we need to start down and do.
Before we get into the mapping and all that sort of thing.
You know, I think this, or? I think it should be simultaneous, yeah. And I asked him, I, I called Ted today to see if we could get a big set of, of just county tax maps. And so, we can have those, when we have questions as far as it goes, then we can go up there and just walk up to the table, we can look at them and stand around and see, says, you know what? Look here, look at, look at all these residential developments, or look, look at the commercial, that's here, and this, that, whatever. When you visually can see it on a map as far as it goes, then some things start to make more sense, okay? Uh, because, no, it's not the actual ground you're walking on, but it, 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 it is a, a representation of, of what's there.
Terry, I'll see, I, I think my GIS person can get us.
Really?
Um, can get us a map showing the land use and.
Yeah, because there's a hundred and twenty.
That's how it's originally done, when they were creating the different zoning districts, they used, um.
Based on what the taxes that you have, or?
What the taxes that you have as far as uses of the property, so where it means that residential areas that need to be impacted, these sort of vertical areas, and maybe need to be expanded, so on and so forth.
Well.
And we can compare that again, I guess, with what the zoning, um, what the zoning districts show on the map and see if there's any adjustments. I mean, we made a long, lengthy text of the resolution to make sure that it reflects what it's supposedly designed to do.
I, I know in the original zoning, sometimes as, as women up the board, there were commercial properties that were already acting as commercial, but they didn't get rezoned, okay? And so, we've always gone back and said, you know what? That store's been there for sixty, seventy years, it was already commercial, this, that, whatever. And when other people then wanted to do commercial around it, that was one of the criteria that we always looked at. Well, this guy wanted to do a store, well, this store's been here sixty years. Sometimes when we were saying, well, we, you can't do a store. We, we, we're not going, we don't want any more commercial there. And I'm sitting there and looking at it from, from logical standpoint, that isn't making sense. You know, all because we didn't resuminate commercials to begin with, when, when it was already a business. So there were some things I think that may have gotten overlooked. This time when we go back, I want those spotted, and I want, I want them in there so that we can see what's there. Because, think about it, it's been, look how many years it's there, and look how many properties have, from the original rezoning, have been rezoned. And per se, so, the other thing it's gonna show us is, it's gonna show us our pattern to a certain extent, and it's gonna show us what people want to do, uh, based just on the rezonings.
And where.
And where. So, that, that will be more information. There's, there, I think the other thing is this, is that, wha- what, what are the things that, that impact the county, and what is it that gives them their quality of life, okay? So first and foremost, if you live here, first thing is, is you really feel safe is that when you get in your car, that you can get on the road and that you can drive A to B or wherever that you wanna go, all right? Uh, now, the quality of life also means that when you get in your car to go to A to B and you said, you know what, I wanna go buy a new pair of shoes, but I gotta drive sixty miles to buy one, because I don't have a shoe store here. But what if everybody said, I don't wanna drive sixty miles? And some guy said, you know what, I'm gonna, I wanna build a shoe store. And, and we come up and say, well, that's all fine, but you're not zoned for that. But we'd be willing to let you get your property rezoned because we think a shoe store is a good thing. But he says, well, that's good, so what's the next step? Well, in county commission, they, they've got a rezonary property, so that you can put your shoe store there. Well, there may be a guy living there says, I don't want a shoe store beside me. And so, if he convinces enough of county commissions to do that, then we don't get a shoe store. And, and I know that's, that's, that's a silly example as far as it goes, but I'm just saying, the quality of life is, is those people didn't have to drive that distance to find something that they wanted because basically the business was here for them to actually come shopping. The next thing is, is that, you know, when you look at it, all right? The next thing is people look at it as far as it goes is they wanna live where it's easy for them to drive for employment. Uh, right now, we're sort of a bedridden community because we may not have enough opportunities for employment and everything else. So they're driving to the joining counties, so what are they looking for? They're looking for an easy, fast way to get from A to B so they can get back and forth to work, so that basically, they don't end up having a ten-hour day, college, commutes and everything else. Well, my thing is, is that we're getting a new four-lane road near the finished in Sevier County. We've got a new four-lane road going out toward Hamlin County, which helps that. We got a levee, we got I forty, and to me, the next step is Dumpham Valley. Which basically what it does is, it says that Jefferson County, at this point in time, if we don't have the jobs, at least we're giving the people that need to go out and make the work, come back here, an opportunity to drive on a safe road. All right, so roads are important. Next thing is, is they want your kids educated, and they want them to be able to get to school safer. And when they get there, back home safely, and, as far as it goes. And, but they, you know, part of the thing is, getting a good education is, they say, well, we, if our classrooms get too big, then they said, kid, kids don't get educated, whatever. So we're always worried about what? Overcrowding in schools, which in turn leads to more schools, okay? Uh, but, but, and same thing. You build out in a rural area, you're there as far as it goes, you have some expectation that if you get hurt, that the ambulance is gonna be able there to come and help you and take you to a hospital and, and get you the treatment that you want. So, there again, medical service, and we, and we talk to, if we talk to the EMS and everything else, he may tell us, he says, if we continue these growth patterns here and there, then I may need a station here, there, whatever. That's what we, we need to know that. We need to know that, because we may look at an area there and we say, you know what? This would be a good, this might be a good place, and, but, but here's the thing. We may not make that decision where that actually goes, but I'm gonna ask them. I wanna know. They're, they're, they're the experts, so I, I, I'm gonna reach out to all those people, I wanna know what, what they're thinking. I've done it once already, but I want them to give this information to you. And it's the same thing for schools, you know, where do we stand? So, what's, what's your plan? What's ten years from now? What you feel is, is gonna be pertinent as far as schools in this county? I don't know. Ten years from now, we may not meet brick-and-mortar buildings. It may be everybody's at home on the internet and that's how you get educated, I don't know. Uh, I, I can't see that far, but all I know is what the present situation is. And they're gonna base it on that, and then what they tell me they think is anticipating, uh, the future gonna be, all right? So, there you have it. That's, that's the data that I want to give, for them to, to bring, to give to you so that you can see the whole big picture and not just saying, well, here's a road with a commercial building. That, that's, to me, that, that, that's what a growth plan is, uh, as far as it goes. I'm not, I'm not so much worried typically about where we were ten or twelve years ago. I'm more worried about where we're at now and making us get to this next step a lot easier. And so, when, you know, it was thrown at us at the meeting about, we think you need a growth plan first, we think you need a growth plan first, or land use plan, I'm sorry, a land use plan and everything else. I understand that, but for me, the land use plan, I could write a paragraph for Jefferson County on what I thought the land use plan should be. And it could be as vague as anything else, but then it could be so broad that we could just about do anything that we want to do, okay? I don't want us to be pin, I, I don't want us to be just put in the corner on, on things, okay? As far as it goes. And so, that's why the land use plan, yes, it'll happen, but I think it needs to be going in correspondence with what we're doing right now. The only other question I didn't ask was this, was that. And I think, are, we are in our legal rights, if the county commission wants to rezone this county, they can do it, okay?
County commission, we were part of my long, long, difficult.
Recommendations, that's what we've been doing, is making recommendations. But by law, that, they can do that, they have the authority to do that. If they didn't, we wouldn't be talking about that here. But I, that was one of the first things I thought, and that was one of the first questions that I asked from the legal department, and that was the answer I got, the county commission can do that. So I, so, I think that we're in agreement, and we'll, we'll try to get the ball rolling. And I'm gonna try to get as much information and everything else in front of us as we possibly can, and try to come up with some sort of, an agenda and tackling the issues as they come along. Hopefully get there from now. I need for you to write down, because you see it just like I do, to write down all the problems that we have, that we've occurred in here with zoning issues and everything else. If you have solutions to them, I would, I, I wanna hear them, okay? I, I wanna hear, I, I, that, that's, you know, I, I don't want it to be just one side. I, I, I need, I want, I need input, you know, and if you've got, and here's the thing is, hopefully, I mean, you know, typically when people call you and talk to you and everything else, it's, it's, it's not necessarily, there are gonna be times when you can tell them, I can't talk to you about that, if it's gonna be an issue that we have here. But that doesn't mean that you can't listen to what they have, may have on the issue, say that something's not even on the agenda. You can, and, and, and you should, to a certain extent, okay? So, for item D, I, I'm gonna take that as, as, as a nod from everybody to proceed, okay? All right. Let's go on to item E. And this is a discussion of a senior adult campground. And, uh, this idea was brought to me by Chad Dixon, and I told him that I would put this on here for you. Here's one of the things a- about this, is that when we start redoing this rezoning, as far as it goes, and we redesignate some things in here, there may be some things in here that we may expand on, as far as it goes. Because we may look to see that there are things that are happening in other states, in other counties or everything else, that work just fine, but we didn't, we didn't, but they've not been done here in Jefferson County. And so, uh, Chad, going to come tonight, he had some things, he brought some things here for, for your review. If you noticed, if you looked at the books.
I did, I made some stuff for you.
And it was about the need, possible need for a senior adult campground.
Well, it's not just that, I just, you know, I sat in this meeting in November and I listened to everybody fussing about RVs. We don't want transient RVs, we don't want this one, and I get that point. Location probably wasn't the best in the world, and, and part of that was a developer problem, you know? The developer probably should've had enough morals to say, you know what, I built a house all the way around here, I'm not gonna leave this piece in the middle for unrestricted use, it shouldn't have been residential too, uh, even before he sold it. But just a little bit of talking points about RV. Hundred and forty billion revenue in the United States in twenty-two. That's up from a hundred and fourteen billion to nineteen, three years, twenty-three percent growth. So, it creates seven hundred thousand jobs across the country, and it brings in a lot of tax revenue. Thirteen point six billion in federal, state, and local taxes, for RVs in this country.
This is the rental, or is this the?
This is the whole RV industry, this is manufacturing, sales, service, campgrounds, the whole nine yards. And the reason it exploded was COVID. I mean, it just, you know, and, and, and you already see it peaking and, and, you know, it's kind of turning the other way, it's not as bad. But I listened to that discussion in November and I'm thinking, so I did a little research. You've had twelve campgrounds in this county, I heard somebody speak about it that night, all right? You've had zones since ninety-eight. Campus site planners approved the night, you're gonna have six. So, the one approved tonight is thirteen, so you've had six since ninety-eight. Well, you restructured the guidelines for campgrounds in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. You know, said, well, we're not gonna allow this, we're not gonna allow this, we're not gonna allow that.
Had anything for it.
Well, you, you did.
Other than environment.
Exactly, but six of those twelve came before you even had zones.
Right.
Because, and you know, a lot of that's promoted by TBA. When you build lakes, TBA plus campgrounds on every lake. I mean, they just do. So, that's where you ended up, and a lot of the ones they complained about were the ones that were built before zoning. So, since you changed the guidelines in thirteen, you've only had three site plans approved. Three, and that's all, that's all you've had approved. So, you're talking ten years, you've had three, so, you know, I heard, say, well, there's too many campgrounds to be. Really? I mean, you've had three in ten years. The county's grown that much. They approved seven in Sevier County last year. Just saying. If there wasn't a demand for them, I wouldn't be building, you know? It's a big tourism industry too. I mean, these people come, they bring their real folks and they eat in restaurants, and they go to grocery stores, and they go do this, and they shop here, and they visit other stores. At the end of the week, you fold up your billfold and go home, make more money, so they come back next year. I mean, you don't gotta build one school, not one classroom. It's, it's tourism, it's a huge industry, and it ain't just, you know, RVs, hotels, restaurants, it affects, you know, a lot of people. So, but there's also demand for longer-term quality RV resorts. It's a big demand for it. I mean, the baby boomers are getting older, they don't feel as comfortable pulling these things up and down the road, but they still love RVing, they love the RV lifestyle, they like meeting with other people, congregating, talking with them. And that's just part of it. I don't know if anybody can't or not, but I can assure you, when somebody pulls into a campground, they get out and talk to their neighbors. Somebody's trucking, it's starting to be twenty-five people over there figuring it out. The first problem with the camper, I mean, that's the way they do it. But, and I brought some examples of some of these other places, I mean, some of the resorts, they call it on a map, and they sell the lots. And if you buy a lot, then when you're not staying on it, we can put it on our program, just like the timeshare, just like the condo. You get part of the money, the rental, you get part of the money, it's like an overnight cabinet.
So it's against occupancy tax.
Right, it does, absolutely it does. Uh, because it's, unless the owner stays there, if the owner stays there six months, it don't, but you're still getting property tax revenue. And you're getting the tax revenue, that's why they're always sitting there eating in restaurants and doing this. So it's untelling what that tax revenue is. But what I'm talking about is not necessarily selling lots, but people coming in here and saying, well, I wanna rent this lot, and I have a ton of customers coming back to me that they live in the rental. They've got a half a million dollar bus and they retire, they sold their house, they're traveling the country. And after two or three years of running every word, they're like, well, we wanna sort of settle down for a little while. They love East Tennessee, they'll come here and they'll sit down for six or seven months, then when the first frost hits, they say, we're going to Florida, we'll see you next spring. I mean, that's what they do. The, and, and they call them snowbirds down there. But when you go to Florida, the resorts down there, you go down to our tribal and campsite for a month, in the winter. But, when you go to Florida, the resorts down there, you go down to our campground and campsite for a month, in the winter. And they'll say, no, it's a six-month minimum. You've gotta rent six months. Because, that's what we want, we want these people that are coming from East Tennessee from summer, we want you here all winter. You, we don't wanna have to rotate million people. And, and I'm not talking about fish camps, I'm not talking about some of the stuff you've got with us, I'm talking about resorts. That's what I'm talking about. And you look at some of those pictures, you'll see, uh, they don't wanna roof over their RV, but they may wanna outdoor kitchen and an apple fireplace on their side. They can use it, the weather ain't the best in the world, they can grill out, I mean, it's, they spend a lot of money on these things. It's a nice deal, it's just something I'd like y'all to consider, you know? And that's the reason I brought that stuff for you to look at, and it, I just think maybe it ought to be something that's addressed in the new zoning and in the new resolutions.
So, senior adult, you have these, it's gonna be a long time.
Yeah.
But.
Not necessarily.
Six months, yeah, six months.
Yeah, yeah, six months, no?
Right now, our reg says you can only stay twenty-nine days. Then you gotta go, move out of the country. I like these asking a senior resort like that for six months before you run out.
Right.
So, and it could be different guidelines for this, than what we have up here.
That's what I was fixing to ask, are they different? If we put that in and, and he wants to build that, it's gotta be, you're not bringing your kids in here to school, you're not, uh,
That's right.
You know, the, the guideline, we can make different classifications when we do redo these zones.
Yeah, they're not changing their address. They're not, they're not.
And willing to pave all the roads.
Yeah.
And which we don't make them do now, just the first three hundred foot.
Right, so this type of play, brood the night, you gotta play the first three hundred foot. All the sites can be gravel, roads can be gravel. What I'm talking about, it's okay, yeah, you wanna build a, a senior adult or a retirement community for this, so, concrete every site, paved every road, build a landscape, and put amenities in. Let's build pickleball courts, let's build dog parks, build swimming pools, put hot tubs in. Let's have convenience, we'll eat and have coffee, I mean, it's, it takes a lot of money to do it, but it draws a good clientele for the county. It really does. It, it ain't homes, you know, but no means. You look at some of them pictures, some of them RV sites right there sell for two million dollars, just the site.
Yeah. So, question, how do we regulate that, Chad? How, how, if, if, if you're doing it, you're screwing it, but let's, let's say some development outfit comes in here and they wanna do the same thing that you're talking about. How do we put in place regulations that allow us to do that because we've not got the funds nor the manpower to have Tim go down there and check everybody that turn all seniors that they built? And how, how do we do that when we're structuring?
I, I don't, I don't think, if you put the amenities and the upgrades that have to be done, get this approved, you ain't gonna have to regulate it. You ain't gonna have to.
The price will regulate it.
The price will take care of itself. You're not gonna get it. I'm, I'm, I promise you, if I'm gonna spend that much money on each site, somebody, Tom Clark, he can't be. Simple as that, he doesn't weigh a thing. I'm there for you to say. But I mean, it, it'll take care of itself, you know? And I, I kinda think, and I've been talking to some commissioners in other counties, it's kinda like the issue that was brought up down here on the R1 zoning problem here just recently, and it's like, well, you put guidelines, it's the same, it's the same thing. You wanna stay long-term in the campground, here's the guidelines, you gotta do, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, you gotta do this. Same thing in subdivision. You're outside the growth boundary, if you're one of the R1s on and you're gonna build this many houses, here's the deal. Bring me your restrictions, you bring me your guidelines, you bring me, you're gonna build a minimum eighteen hundred square foot, stick-built house. You're not gonna have a manufacturer on after we rezonate, you can't pull a manufacturer on you. You, and, in other counties, they do do that. They do do it.
I wasn't sure if that was legal. Is it? In other words.
So rezoning contention, if your rezoning is contentious upon, you're not putting manufactured homes in here, you're putting stick-built homes in here. Bring us your restrictions. And if you go by these restrictions, we're gonna rezonate this property contentious.
I would question whether that, would you say it, it, it's gonna not?
It is gonna not, absolutely it's gonna not. And not only that, I mean, big development cars, just gotta prove, okay, you wanna widen the road, you're gonna put a turn signal in. But, over on the other side, you've got, this has to be designated commercial, because you're putting thousands of houses over here. You're putting a market right here, you're putting this here, you're putting this here. And there's also a park that goes behind it. I mean, you want this approved, this goes with it, contention. And they are doing it. So I don't know the legalities, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm telling you it's getting done, so, what's good for the goose? It'll create some nice developments, I can tell you that.
Well, you know, speaking of that, because, here, here's the thing, we just addressed earlier, when we addressed the land art, is that when you look at, when they went in and requested their rezoning at that point in time, yeah, they were willing, the county commissioners were willing to rezonate, but look at the commissions, well, they look at the conditions that they put on there for him, them to do it, and some of them were maybe not conditions that were, that we would've required from, for subdivisions, as far as that goes. So, I don't know, I mean, I guess that stood a test of time, as far as it goes, maybe it was not legal, maybe it wasn't anyway, I don't know.
It's never a challenge.
Well, here's the thing, if you wanna develop it, you're gonna do this. If you don't, we're not gonna rezonate.
And that's what they did.
That's exactly what they did.
Yeah.
Pretty simple.
Okay. Any questions, any questions to Chad over that? And this will probably be something when we get, when we start doing this, that we will, we will probably address, okay? So, all I'm saying is, it, it, other places have them. And if, you know, if, if it's something you think would be nice for Jefferson County, then that, then that's what we're, that's how we address it.
I think everything, if we, if we do this on the reason, I think everything's on the same, at least from, with me. I, I think we look at everything.
I agree.
Do ideas included, I mean, and say, yay or nay, and, and if you say yay, you got to have the conditions.
Well, how does the property tax file, is it commercial, commercial property tax?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Well, sure.
Yeah.
That's commercial.
Absolutely.
How's it priced?
For campsite.
For campsite.
Yeah, for campsite. And then plus the other amenities or whatever. And then are the land tax.
And then you pay yourself, I think you pay hotel, motel, and ski.
But then if you was doing long-term, you wouldn't pay that, but you still also pay tangible personal property tax on golf carts, yada, 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 pool chairs. I mean, it just goes on.
But over time, you gotta pay the hotel. So the long-term, being in six months, won't have to pay that?
I, no, I guess not.
No, the, the long-term wouldn't pay that. But, but it's like an apartment, but you're not collecting anyway, but I mean, just for example, this piece of property I got tonight, so, you take, it's probably bringing in five, six, seven hundred dollars of property tax money in greenbelt. When you develop it commercially, it's probably gonna bring in twenty thousand property tax. I mean, I'm just saying, you know what I mean? Right. No classrooms.
Those goes to the campground, they all vote from the city station.
Well, we got schools. We're gonna build a campground here, and that's the very reason that, that I, not, not, I, I wish there's something I can do about it, I don't wanna keep it, that I have to do. I, I don't know, it's, it's, it's either a sign of the times, you know, as far as that goes, but, and, and that's the nature of the beast, it seems like now. Okay, alright, so I think that's something that we, we will address, alright? Okay, let's, let's move to the next item, discussion, change the R1 rural residential minimum square footage requirements. Again, and I think we put this on here because we requested it, and, uh, I, I think that will be part of the things that we're gonna look at when we, when we go to, to Mississippi. I think it's gonna help, I think it's gonna help us rezoning properties outside of growth boundary, it's gonna protect some people. But I, but again, I think we need to look at what, when we do that, that we, we do have a distribution a lot of times, as far as it goes. And so, it needs to be different, it needs to be different than what's in the growth boundary on the outside. But the R1 gives more protection, is the way I look at it, gives more protection, and, from that standpoint. So I think that that'll help, you know, we, and, and I think that's something we will probably do, I mean, do you agree? I mean, uh.
You're saying it shouldn't be either or like it is with the A1 and the R1, they're, they're, the A1 allows them variety uses that could impact the rest of us.
It is.
But the R1 doesn't, um, you know.
The R, the R1 is limited, it is, that's where that goes, yeah, it is, it is more than, but I, I think there's a swap out. I, I still feel that at times, you may get one or two more house sites, based on the density, or as far as that goes. But then, but you give the neighbors and everybody else there a peace of mind of knowing that, I know what's going in here, and it's either gonna be a house, a church, or a school now. That being said, that's where that goes. Some people say, I don't want a church beside of me. And then, I, I know when they were looking for the school sites around here, there was people said, don't, I don't want it beside me, as far as it goes. And then, when some people say, on the residential, well, I don't mind the houses coming, but I, I don't like particular brands or styles of houses. I would prefer you do something else. We're not in, we're not in the architectural business, we're, we're not, we don't get there, or we're not gonna be splitting hairs over, over that issue, okay? So, whatever the state law says is legal is, is what we have to go with on that. But I'm just saying that we can give them a little bit more protection from that, and I thought that all along, but, anyway. Uh, you know, we, we've tried to, uh, stick with, with the growth boundary and tried to, uh, maintain it to a certain extent. Have we always done that? No. But at least not, there have been changes as far as that goes. Uh, you know, we've made recommendations, they got turned down, and then we've made recommendations not to rezonate, county commission has to rezonate in, in the growth boundary, so it's a give or take.
I don't think the county commission's made problems.
Well, I'm not always saying, they just have the last say, John, they just get the last say. That's where that goes, they just get to have the last say. No, I mean, they're not.
Well, you might wanna look at explaining your growth boundary.
Yeah, well.
When you're doing these new guidelines. Hey, if it's easy, everybody.
Go from a backdoor lot to a front door.
You know, and that's something that, that I think that everybody could probably live with on, on, in that situation. It was just, we just didn't have a plane to take that option at that one time. But I think we could, we could get that option.
But if we're, if we're gonna address this, and you're talking about giving the protections, and, and I'm gonna use you all as an example of ours, for the subdivision, if they come in and they build a house on a forty thousand square foot lot up there, if it's, if it were to be zoned R1, would they not want the same protections they would want twenty thousand square foot lot right beside them, because it, that's gonna change the character of that area if you do that, is it not?
It's not, but that's what they have, because they're zoned R1.
You're saying that if it was, if it was already forty thousand, if you wanna keep the character outside the growth boundary, and you wanna worry about the density.
Right.
Then you don't want it changed, what you're trying to do is just bring in some conditions.
I understand.
On what that cluster's gonna look like.
Right. You're right, you're right. So, what I'm saying is, is that when we, when, I think once we get into this, this issue that we've got here that you want us to put on here, I think that's gonna be addressed. Now, whatever, what, what the final number ends up being, well, that'll be up to this board to decide that at that point in time. And I guess, after we look at all the data and everything else, it's what we feel, feel comfortable with. You know, feel comfortable.
And the planning commission, it simply has recommendation powers, and all the absolute powers the planning commission has is with subdivision regulations to adopt and implement subdivision regulations.
You know, one of the things in the subdivision regulations, kinda like the problem we're having up there, is at one time, that was all the same fixed properties. So, if you build phase one, you build phase two, or you're cutting it big chunks, and you want this zoned R1, and you do this residential, then you need to restrict, okay, we're, we're gonna give you approval on this one here, but you're gonna restrict everything that you own right there to the same guidelines. It all has to be R1, you can't come back in later and say, well, we're gonna put a junkyard right over there. You know, I mean, you still be able to say the whole, the whole property.
Look at, is if we're, if we've got a track, and there's, and there's only, and that's, and that's been plenty in the states, it's been.
But I mean, that's just one way to help correct that problem, is to be able to say, well, if you wanna build subdivision phase one here on the first twenty acres, then the whole rest of this property's gonna be residential too.
Yeah. Well, moving on, I think out of previous discussions, uh, and continued view of the land use plans, I think that's gonna change for me if we, I think it's gonna come into play as, as we progress this thing, but I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. I think it's gonna have to be in conjunction with it, because we're gonna decide basically to be the land use plan once we determine out here, if we rezonate this, 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 then that is our land use plan. This is what we're gonna follow, is it not?
Some of the proposed changes that put in the land use plan were a result of not direct statements from the planning commission, but from incorporating the intent of what we went through when we were looking at the subdivision regulations. If I'll be unasked, in other words, I made a policy of something that the planning commission had agreed to do with the subdivision regulations.
The other thing, and I say this was because I have the utmost respect for you on what you're doing on the table, that land use plan, uh, it's got some technical issues that needs to be addressed.
Thank you, John.
Well, you're talking about numbers and.
The, the charts and the stuff in there did not get updated.
It's not updated.
And we don't need to pass that with those technical issues in.
Well, I, I think, I think our direction's gonna change. I really do, I think our direction's gonna change, and, and I think that needs to be the direction of the land use plan for this. And now, you know, if it's good for ten years, then, you know, whoever's here, ten years from now, I hope they look back and say, well, at least we got part of that. Because I've looked at the, at the land use plan, I looked, went back and looked at what the projections were, and where we were today, and some of the things that were making recommendations that were made and everything else in there, and I'd say ninety percent of them, some of the recommendations that were made, nothing ever happened to them. So, I could sit here all day long and say, I see the problems in the county, I think we need to do this, 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 and this. But in ten years, if that's what you're wanting to address to and get to, and you haven't, and you haven't gotten there, then I, I don't know what, you know, it's just words on paper. I guess it was somebody's idea that this, this fell into cracks, to a certain extent, so, I don't know. I, I hope this one that comes around has got a little bit of teeth to it, there's gonna be some other actions that's gonna be taken, and, to, to help it along, I guess. So, alright. So, like I say, I think that, if y'all agree with me, I think that, that's gonna fall into place with quite a, the, the whole big picture, right there. Alright. Anybody else got anything else? Because I have one other thing, uh, when we're here in other business. And here, here was the question that presented to me, it's really just a clarification thing that I think we need to address. And, and this came from the county building inspector, and he talked to Tim and everything else, it's in regards to accessory buildings in the county. I look at county zoning as far as it goes, and so it's this, if you don't have a house, then I think the way you interpreted is that you can't have an accessory building.
What would it be accessory to?
Okay, right. Or, let's say for instance, you have a vacant piece of property and you build a building to park your tractor in, and you're, and you're farming this land, does that mean that's the primary building for that particular property, or is that considered an accessory building?
Well, that'd be probably primary and agricultural buildings, or just?
Oh, okay.
You can't, you can't regularly build a barn.
Okay, so, now, this question.
I see your point, though, like, let's say somebody's gonna build a house.
Yes.
And they put the garage in first.
Yes.
To store the mold and all that sort of thing.
Yes.
There's kind of a gap there.
Well, no, what we've done over the years is, they go in and get the building that's by us.
Right.
So they build that garage first.
Okay.
I think it's it.
Okay, but they do that, okay?
But they do that.
They do that, and so if they don't build the house, they pay for a permit, as far as it goes, the permit, basically, how long it expires or not expires.
Every six months, I think.
Okay, so, alright, so if they don't do that, then, but we don't have a way to make them tear the building down?
No.
We don't. So, you know, what I'm saying is, is that, uh, So, you know, what I'm saying is, is that, uh, I, I'm not sure that, what is, is there is, is working, I just know that he did, he was looking to do that, and he wanted to make sure that what he was doing is gonna be following zoning guidelines. He was looking for some direction, and some clarification of what we had in the zoning, and, and I read through it, I thought there might've been just a little bit of gray area, or a lot of gray area, I don't know how you interpret it, but he was just looking for some direction, and I told him, I'll bring it up for this board.
You know, I think it can be handled like, like Tim suggested, or it could be handled through a building permit process.
Well, that's what we know.
Do you know what stipulations?
I think, I think, oh, yeah, you know, build a house.
Right. What if you don't wanna build? This guy just wanted to build a garage, and as far as that goes, and he wanted to put his tractor in there, and he might wanna put something else in. But, he, eventually, he may build a house, but that's not his plans as of right now. And if you look at that, the gray.
But he could've said he was a hundred percent, he could've said.
Okay, so, all I'm saying is, is if you look at, at, at our zoning guidelines, that can be considered an accessory structure, you know? Uh, it may not be the main structure, but then, if you just have land, and you have a barn there, and you live ten miles down the road, you need that barn on your property right there. Is that an accessory structure, or whatever? I know it's agriculture, but I'm just saying, it, it's still an accessory, it's not on your house, it isn't on that parcel, and that, that's where I'm coming from, so. I, I, I mean, I know how the cities, they, they don't, they don't allow that, but in the county, that I, I was just curious as, as, after I read that, if that was the same policy. And I think that Rob was just looking for some direction, so he let the guy know, hey, can or he can't. And so, and I, and I told him I would bring it up for this board.
No, I know you could.
I, I know, I know.
The way it's written, I agree with Tim, the way it's written.
But if, that's something y'all could change when you redo this stuff, if you, that's what you feel like you need.
Well, I don't know, I just, I wasn't sure about it, and, uh, I, I, I read it, and I saw, saw one thing, and then when I start reading the definitions, then I'm trying to determine, when does something become primary, and when, or when is it accessory? And so, you know, I might build a barn, and that might be the primary building, and I might come over here and build a shed, and that's accessory building for the barn. I, I, I don't, you know, that's what I'm saying, I don't.
I don't think a barn's ever been a question.
No, I don't, I know that, but I'm just thinking that, thinking that one. You know, because this guy's building this, he's calling it a garage, but he's gonna park his tractor in it, so, it's.
I don't agree with what you're saying, from a, from a accessory to a barn, I guess.
That's, that's the question.
Well, you go, when you get to building, you go about six miles later, and there's a car running a mower, and, you know. Always gonna be a truck.
I, I mean, I understand, I understand the, the reason behind it, because eventually it could get junky, or this, that, whatever, if it, but that could happen no matter what in this county, as far as it goes. But, uh, I think that's, he was just, he, he, he was looking for some clarification, and I read it, and, and after I read it, I still wasn't a hundred percent sure which way to go, either way.
I've never really liked that part of the zoning, but that's what we've always done.
But in your opinion, you're, you're saying that any building other, that goes on there other than a house is an accessory building?
If one building down there would be a principal building.
Okay.
It would need to be accessory to, uh, a garage would need to be accessory to a house, for example, if you had a garage, let's say you had three cars in there, you were storing, have the principal building, it's your cellhouse, you're okay.
But it's, uh, two wells of hay would be a barn.
Once you build a garage, you just put a ten, ten-bedroom on it, and all the buildings are lit. That's house, that's house.
That's house, that's house.
The women have to connect them by roof.
Yeah, 'cause you can't build another house in that.
Well, at that time, I might've been the garage.
Subdivision of small lots, this would be a bigger deal than this would be up here.
Okay, so let me ask you this. Could you classify this based upon what the bill's going on, as to how much acreage that's going on?
You can write the zoning laws about any way you want.
All I'm just saying is, is that you, you, and I hate, this is like making new legislation for special rules or whatever, but if you, let's say, for instance, you had five acres, and you wanted to put that type of building on there.
It's gonna look.
Okay, then, then, then it might not be an accessory, but if it's anything less than that, then it might be an accessory, and you might not be able to do it. Because they're saying anything less than that, you might need to come under subdivision guidelines.
And we've got a board of zoning officials that can handle this.
We do, we can address these questions.
Well, I've never put it in front of them all these years, but I don't know what y'all.
I mean, if, all I'm saying is, if, if we can't come up with that definition, then it needs to go before them.
Every time?
At least until a precedent's set.
I think if you're serious about it, we need to change the rules when you're going through this zone.
It's a big, good time.
I agree. Well, yeah, and, the only thing I'm saying is, is that he's just trying to get some clarification on the way it's written right now. And that's where I couldn't, I couldn't give him a definitive answer, based upon, when I read what was in there, and the definitions that were in there, I could, I, I was having a hard time determining when it would become a primary, and when it was an accessory. And that, so that's the way I looked at it.
So, that's definitely one to put a star beside, we need to.
All right. Any, 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 anything?
I guess.
Well, I'm looking at that special time, looking to adjourn. So, motion, et cetera, all those favors? Thank you.